In this episode, we're going to be talking with someone who's going to give us the inside scoop on the fairgrounds in the city of Mobile, but also going to talk about the direction that the city of Mobile is headed very soon.
G one hundred FM plays more of your favorite songs.
Weatherproof is in the pricing.
Hoffman furniture will approve your credit.
You're listening to.
I want to know what a goal is.
The living in Mobile, Alabama podcast.
Where we talk about all things Mobile.
Career's got it, we guarantee it.
Now here's your host, Jeff Jones.
Four oh eight eight, so don't be late.
We're thankful today on the podcast to have the special guest Josh Woods. And Josh is going to tell us some things that are going on with the fair because he's got a lot of experience with that, having worked there for several years. But he's also going to talk with us about the upcoming election for District Six in the city of Mobile for the council member position. And Josh is running for that. So we're going to talk about that today. But before we do that, I'd like to welcome our co-host this morning, Mr. Avery Smith.
Hello.
And of course, we'd like to welcome Josh Woods.
Thank you for having me.
Awesome. Well, we're looking forward to talking with you, going to learn some things. Oh, can't forget. We also have to welcome John over here who's making everything sound great.
Hey guys.
All right. So Josh, you know, I've been looking forward to having you on the podcast and of course, driving around town, get to see the signs and all the things that are going on. And this is a very interesting time in the city of Mobile because of this unique election that's happened like all of a sudden.
Yeah, it's very unique. Um, we're probably the only election in the entire world that day. Just to, just to put that in some sort of context.
Okay, okay. And it's interesting because the person who had this other position in District Six, they recently resigned. And then all of a sudden, we have to have this emergency election. And of course, on another episode, we talked with Kyle Callahan, who's running for office as well. Um, and so this is an exciting time, um, because I mean, there's so much, anybody who's from Mobile, um, or they've been hearing in the news about Mobile, there's so much going on with jobs coming here, development, all those type of things. And so, um, if you get elected, then you're going to be on the hot seat for a lot of exciting things coming down the pipe.
There he is. I mean, there's so much momentum going on in Mobile right now. Uh, you look at the port, the ports, you know, about to come online with the, with the, um, with the deepening of it. Uh, when you look at Airbus, Airbus is expanding, uh, all the, uh, had a chance to go to, um, to a chamber, um, after hours the other day, um, with an aerospace industry, um, partner in, and, um, there, there, there's so much going on and Mobile is just an exciting place. I mean, you, you all see firsthand, I mean, people are buying houses, people are moving, people are building, um, you know, really 2023 is an exciting time and I can't wait for what the future holds for us.
Well, it's interesting. You mentioned the port. Uh, so just last weekend, I was driving around Spanish Fort, Daphne, and some in Fairhope, um, for somebody who's moving here for, um, for the port. And you know, one of the things is they wanted to be close to downtown. So they were looking at West Mobile, you know, they were looking across the bay, they were looking all over the place. And it was really interesting and that he confirmed, yep, they're, they're making the, uh, the port deeper and they've got all these incredible plans. So I mean, we just hear about that stuff all the time.
Yeah. And sometimes we take it for granted, uh, all these great things happening, uh, all the news surrounding different projects that are going on. Uh, sometimes we do get too comfortable and we take it for granted, but you know, just remembering and remember where we're at, seeing everything that goes on. And even looking elsewhere, uh, other cities, they don't have the momentum that we have. And, uh, it's just an exciting time right now to be in Mobile.
It's exciting. That is for sure. So, uh, we, um, wanted to talk with you obviously about what's going on with the election, but also there's some history here. Like talk to us a little bit about, you know, how long you've been in Mobile, what you've been doing, keeping, you know, busy with your job and so forth. Give us a little insight.
So I grew up in Mobile County, uh, when me and, me and my wife both, uh, attended, uh, University of South Alabama, we graduated in oh nine. And looking out to see where we need to find a career, we, we stayed in Mobile, we love Mobile, I'm very passionate about Mobile. So we moved in, our first, uh, first home together was at Regency Gates Apartments. Uh, we lived there, uh, when it came time to raise a family, we, uh, found a home in District Six. Uh, we, so we've lived there, uh, lived in District Six pretty much the most, you know, majority of our marriage. Uh, but, uh, we did a small stint for about a year, year and a half down in Midtown.
Okay.
But when it came time to raise a family, we moved, we found a house, a home in District Six. Um, my job, my career, I spent 10 years in banking, um, with BBNT or Colonial BBNT. Um, I'm a finance major. So after college, uh, graduating in oh nine was an amazing time, uh, for the financial markets and the, and the, the home builders. And you know, it was just a great time. So, uh, when I came out of, of college, there really wasn't any jobs. Uh, you know, stayed with the bank, I worked with them, uh, part-time through college, um, stayed with the bank, uh, ended up, uh, after about six months moving into commercial lending. Uh, so I underwrote for, uh, for, for, uh, commercial loans, about a million to 50 million, depending on the loan type. And then the opportunity arose, uh, after about a decade of banking, uh, to, to take the position as executive director at the greater Gulf State Fair. And, um, so.
That's a little, little bit of a shift there.
Yeah, weird, uh, you know, they really don't naturally flow in each other. But, um, I'll tell you, I, I felt equipped and, um, the board felt equipped that I was equipped as well. And I ended up being hired there. This is going to be my eighth fair on staff and, uh, really love the job. Uh, there's so much that goes on where, you know, when I took over there, we were about 88 days, event days. Uh, right now we're sitting, we're sitting at about 172. Um, so my, my team does a great job of, uh, of managing both, uh, the year round rentals, but, and also the fairs as well.
So that's what I was curious about. And I was thinking, you know, through the questions we were going to talk. And I wanted to know like, what percentage of activity is dedicated to that timeframe in the fall for the fair compared with everything else?
Yeah. So we basically close up shop per se for rentals, um, right around that first week of October. Uh, and that, cause it really does take about three weeks to kind of get everything set. Cause you gotta think, we live in Mobile. So the grass is still growing in October.
Yep.
Um, so we, we take that, that final three weeks, uh, we're starting to put up our stuff on our side. Uh, get the grass cut, make sure all the campsites are ready, make sure the parking lot, everything's ready to go. And then, uh, within about a week, um, week before the fair, that's when everything starts showing up. Pretty much 24 hours a day, we're setting up for the fair, food vendors, rides, concessions. And, uh, then about five days later, after the fair, it just moves out and it gets back quite.
That's wild. Yeah. It's, it's gotta be an immense amount of stress and pressure to make sure that everything flows smoothly. And having all those people answer to you honestly.
Um, it, it was. And so I initially took over, uh, the first year and a half or so, I just got to a point where it's like, um, I, I, we gotta get some help.
Yeah.
So, um, through a strategic planning process with the board, we, uh, were able to kind of delegate some duties out to different positions. So now I have a fair manager, um, having events coordinator, uh, marketing coordinator and a operations manager and, and a, a team of operations staff. So we're basically, uh, we're a small shop, which most fairgrounds are, uh, we're about seven folks, um, seven to eight folks to put in. And then, uh, we do go seasonal where we ramp up to upwards of probably a hundred and fifty, um, uh, we'll call them full-time seasonal. Um, and then maybe up to 300, um, at times, uh.
I had no clue. Like this is all like, I had no clue all this was going on behind the scenes.
It is. It's, uh, we're, we're, we call ourselves a small city because we do, uh, during the fair, um, we have a police force of, um, off-duty officers that, that provide security for us. Your, uh, full-time, 24 hours a day throughout the fair. And then we also have, uh, obviously during operating hours, uh, mobile fire rescue comes and sets up as well. So we have a public safety center that's split between the fire and the police. And, uh, we, we obviously have an operation team. Uh, most of the time we have an electrician there all the time, uh, waiting for something to go wrong.
Makes sense.
The ride's down. We gotta get this, get, get these kids down.
Fortunately, that's not, that's not our, uh, our pouray. That's the carnival side. But, um, you know, then lots of times we have a plumber on standby because there's always going to be something that goes wrong. If, if it's going perfect, um, just wait for it, uh, something's going to break. So, uh, we're, we stay, stay prepared for that. But, um, it can be stressful, especially that leading up to the fair, um, especially when it rains, um, as it did last year. But, um, it, it's a, it's a really fulfilling job. We get to work with a lot of people across the city and, uh, a lot of, we've developed a lot of relationships. Um, and so it's really a fun and rewarding job.
That is super cool.
It is. Anything crazy? Crazy fair story?
Oh, there's lots of crazy. Uh, I'll tell this one. Um, so, uh, it's the craziest story too. So we have a petting zoo, obviously. Um, and part of the petting zoo, um, at this time was a, um, was a, uh, was a porcupine.
Oh my goodness.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't in the petting section. It was in the, it was in the, um, I guess it wasn't in gin pop. It was more in solitary confinement. Well, one night, uh, the porcupine dug out because apparently porcupines dig. Um, and, uh, you can ask the officer that was watching the gate about, about two AM, um, he said he's sitting there watching the gate, not a lot going on at two AM. And, um, he said a porcupine just walked by, um, the gate. And he was like, I don't, I, I, did I see that right? So he goes to try to find it and he's like, well, maybe I was imagining that. So some of the carnival workers were, were hanging out, um, um, around the fire and, you know, just kind of, kind of hanging out. And he rode by and said, did you see a, did you see a porcupine? And they're, um, most of them from South Africa. And, um, they're like, what are you saying? And he's like, uh, a porcupine. What? A porcupine? And they said, oh, no, no, no porcupine. And he's like, yes. And so long story short, the next day, we all pretty much like band together. We have 96 acres and then additional 64, and we covered every square inch of the fairground side by side, walking, trying to find a blasted porcupine. Um, and you know, we couldn't find it. So we just kind of said, maybe the porcupine like wandered off into some surrounding neighborhoods. So we, we called and we let the, um, the officers know and, um, they got a good laugh out of that. Um, so about a day later, um, we're all there and, uh, one of my, it was getting, it was like, it's about nine o'clock at night. One of my board members' wives went to leave and, um, she said, she called him, he's standing right next to me. He, she said, I think there's a porcupine underneath my car. And we're like, what? We found him. So we all went out there and, um, uh, they were able to capture, recapture the porcupine after a, um, after a slight chase.
That is crazy.
Yeah. So it, uh, yeah, every year we have something crazy awful like that happen.
So does the porcupine come back every year?
Um, no, um, this porcupine, uh, uh, apparently was a very mean porcupine and he liked to dig and cause trouble. So, um, he was sold to a, um, to a zoo somewhere.
That is so funny.
Keep it combined, confined.
But you would think that it'd be easy to find like this massive porcupine. It was very hard.
That's, that's crazy.
I'm still shocked it was at a petting zoo.
The non-petting zoo.
Yeah, they go.
So, so as far as, you know, operating the fair and being in charge of all that, I can imagine that you talk with a lot of fair, owners or not owners, but managers and folks around the country that are doing the same thing you're doing. Um, and you see all of that and you see the way they operate and so forth. Where do you see, or do you have like a wish list for the fair, you know, moving forward, some things you'd like to see implemented and so forth?
Yeah. So we're always improving, um, that strategic planning process that we underwent. And, uh, now after five years, it's back, we're back at that strategic planning process. So we're, um, we're implementing new things, seeing new things. Uh, the cool thing about the fair industry is that everybody is, um, everybody's excited. There, there's, there's very few of us, obviously compared to the general population. And we're also like a very tight-knit, uh, group, um, especially the younger folks. Cause for years and years, the carnival industry was probably aged, probably the, you know, upper, uh, six, upper sixties to maybe even the early eighties was kind of the, was kind of like the, they just, people had just done it forever. Um, but now you're starting to see more and more youth coming in, which is really great, more and more diversity coming into the industry. Um, so people are getting real creative, uh, you know, future plans for this year without going in too much detail because we're, we want to, we want to have that element of surprise when people come. Um, you're going to start seeing more and more, um, community activities, uh, community driven. Um, obviously we have a 13-foot cow. Um, so.
Whoa.
We're going to be driving that.
She's like, wait a minute.
It's fiberglass.
Oh, I was like, wait a minute, what's going on in here?
You should have started with that.
Um, so we, uh, we drag around the cow. She's called JC. Uh, we'll be doing and implementing more reading programs, um, getting re-involved in the community. And also trying to find ways that community organizations can do, um, you know, more visual things. Uh, one idea that was floated by is, uh, and a fair down in Florida does an excellent job at this. Um, they, they've, they have raw picnic tables. So, you know, just your plain Jane picnic tables. And they ask artists to volunteer their time, um, and also choose a charity. And then what they do is they've set the tables up and they auction that off during the fair. Um, so really, uh, really getting, uh, you know, getting plugged back into the community. So, so we're looking at items like that where, you know, we, we obviously host year-round events, the fair comes for 10 days, but we also, and we're a nonprofit. So we also want to make sure that we're giving back to the community and maximizing, you know, before COVID, we were really about to ramp up and start our community giving. Um, COVID happened, obviously, uh, and then, you know, it was kind of like, uh, like a hangover a little bit in that 2022, um, uh, 2021 fair. Uh, 2022, we had a rain out. So really we're looking, we're looking right now, finding ways that we can really dive down and get the, get the community plugged in.
Well, that's exciting. You know, I went to the fair this past year with my family and, you know, you're sitting there in all the area where the food is and you're trying to make that decision. Do I want this vendor? Do I want this? And.
I want a big crunchy corn dog.
That's it. That's it. Well, one thing I am excited about, uh, is that Yellow Hammer Coffee has been there, uh, for the last few years. And I will segue into this part where I will say that this episode is sponsored in part by Yellow Hammer Coffee. Uh, like I say, uh, with every episode, uh, Jeff and Mo, uh, I think they really, uh, do something different. And so we're thankful to have them on board and also for what they're doing. So if you're listening to this and you're in another state and you're thinking, what is this Yellow Hammer thing? Just know it's a great coffee company and they specialize in not only great coffee, but also in great culture. And so it's a different experience for sure. Um, so as we kind of, kind of segue into what's going on in your life in terms of the election and this, this incredible opportunity coming up. Uh, talk to us a little bit about some of the door knocking that you've been doing and what has been your favorite part? And maybe even, you know, something interesting that's happened along the way as you've been doing that.
Yeah. So we, we ran last time, unfortunately fell 306 votes short. Uh, and then obviously we, we talked about, um, you know, there was a sudden resignation. Uh, we decided this, I'd, I'd even said I was never going to run for anything again. Um, not out of, uh, not out of like shame or, or disappointment, just that, you know, maybe I just felt like that that was maybe my time to, my time that had came and, you know, opportunity came. Well, this, this came about and we rebounded. I mean, this, it was literally 18 months. So, um, consulting my wife, consulted with the folks that helped us last time and we're, we're going for it again. Uh, we've knocked on, I can't tell you how many doors. Um, I'm on my third pair of shoes. Um, where, uh, I'm wearing shoes out like it's always business, uh, docking on doors pretty much every day, uh, getting to see people. Um, I'll tell you my favorite part though is, uh, knocking on doors, obviously I really like, um, getting to know neighbors, seeing faces, learning about the different neighborhoods. Um, seeing the issues, uh, thanks to the city of Mobile. Now we have a 311 app. So as I'm walking, I'm able to record some issues, uh, and report to the city. And, um, you know, that's, that's been great. But I will tell you like the, the highlight is, uh, I guess the first one would be really meeting, especially older people that, um, and I'm, I'm sure y'all see this in the real estate world, uh, a lot of the neighborhoods are, are shifting, um, you know, families are different stages of life. And it's, it's never like a process. I think gone are the days of somebody living in it, building a house, living in it for 80 years. Um, so, uh, seeing that shift in neighborhoods, um, meeting the older neighbors especially that are said, you know, I've been here for forever. And, um, and then, you know, telling me the history of the neighborhood, um, that's, that's one of my favorite parts. Then also I'd say the other part is knowing that, um, me and my wife, we have three boys. Um, so knocking on a door and a lot of times seeing the hectic, hecticness of kids in the house, uh, it kind of makes me realize that, uh, we're not alone.
For sure.
We're, we're all just the same.
Well, what's interesting when you talk about the neighborhoods and the way things are changing, uh, just in this neighborhood right down the street, there are so many residents that are in their late sixties, early seventies. And I'm out, you know, talking with them, they're cutting the grass and whatever. And they'll say, oh yeah, we've lived here for 25 years. We built this house. And, and so, yeah, but they're going to be selling. They're all going to be selling soon because some of these houses are larger and they don't need, you know, the four bedrooms or the five bedrooms and they want to downsize.
They don't need the upstairs anymore. Um, we, uh, just in my little microcosm of our cul-de-sac, uh, we were, we, we obviously were kind of catching that, that cycle. Uh, me and my wife were the first ones, uh, to move in there with children. Um, they hadn't had, you know, for the most part, the, the closest child was, uh, was already in middle school. So, um, and they were just one. So we moved in and in the past, really five years, um, there's been one, two, there's been five more families move in. So houses for sale, families move in. So it's, I'm unique to see that, see that cycle. And, um, that's encouraging to know that Mobile has the momentum going. Um, that's encouraging to see that because that just means that momentum's continuing.
Yeah, it is continuing. That is for sure. We're seeing a lot of growth. Uh, and you know, kind of sticking with the questions that we like to ask every guest, because I think it's interesting to hear a different perspective with the same questions. And what do you say, um, like, what do you think that Mobile in general does great? Like what do they really have down pat?
Um, so I would say that, uh, I, I think, uh, obviously everybody says the same thing a lot of times, um, the people of Mobile.
We hear that, but it's, it's just confirmation when we keep hearing it again.
It is, um, it's also the culture too. Um, you know, we have, we have a diverse culture. Um, we have a diverse population. Um, that's really cool to see that, uh, and see how people take care of each other and they interact. Um, we have a thriving or vibrant downtown that's, uh, you know, was shuttered, but now it's, it's coming back online. Uh, I think COVID kind of called a timeout right there for it. But, um, you can kind of see that those businesses are continuing to, continuing to, to open up and grow. Um, we'd like to see more retail down there. Um, but that's, you know, that's a wish list that they're working on. Um, but I, at the end of the day, I think it's the culture and the people, uh, friendly faces, um, uh, people actually care. Uh, neighbors are actually taking care of each other and helping each other. Um, you know, obviously it's the duty a lot of times or the commission, a lot of times of churches to, to take care of the community. Um, but, you know, and the, and the churches in our area do a great job, but, uh, also just going door to door and seeing that neighbors are taking care of each other. Um, other day I pulled up, uh, uh, knocked on a door and a man probably in his, his early forties answered the door. And I said, hey, I'm Josh Woods, you know, did my spiel. And, um, he said, I actually don't live here. I actually live three houses down. I'm just checking on my neighbor. He said, we all take turns checking on her, um, making sure she doesn't eat. So I mean, just seeing that and, uh, you know, that's, that's widespread across Mobile. And that really, I think that's why a lot of people want to, I mean, y'all can attest to this, a lot of people want to live in Mobile because they want, they want to be part of something. I think we do that great.
So what you're saying is that Southern hospitality is a real thing.
Especially in Mobile it is. Uh, I can't attest for, you know, Jackson, Mississippi or New Orleans, but, uh, in Mobile, I believe it is.
Yeah, I believe that too. I do. I believe that. Uh, and kind of the opposite of that, you know, with regard to what Mobile does great. What do you see as in general, uh, and obviously you're getting the, the end of the phone call with the complaints and all that, of course. But, but what do you see in general that Mobile needs to work on as a city corporate?
Yeah. So I'd say two things, and this is what, um, you know, you knock on a door and this is what people tell you. Uh, I'd say, um, infrastructure, specifically, uh, roads. Um, I think a lot of times in years past, Mobile, um, Mobile was playing catch-up with the expansion that was occurring. Uh, so I think roads really weren't built with a cognizant, um, purpose per se. They were built to, to transport people back and forth. Um, so I would say that our road structure was, is kind of lacking, but I, we're playing catch-up both on a, on a repairing infrastructure side, and also building new roads and, and doing the proper things that need to be done that hadn't been done in the past. Um, but also I'd say the second thing is probably, um, what, what we've kind of coined in the campaign is, um, is the brain drain that occurs. Uh, and this is really my why, whenever it comes to, comes to why am I running? Um, you know, in, in my generation, um, in, in, in our generation, we've seen, uh, we've seen people go off to college. Uh, you know, the, the kid next door that we, we grew up with, um, swam in his swimming pool. Um, we both go off to college or he goes and he goes to a trade school somewhere else to get a specialty and, um, they never return back to Mobile. Um, you know, you, your friends on Facebook, you keep up with him that way, but, but he never returns back with his family. Um, I think we do a, a, a bad job of retaining and even drawing in new brains. Uh, they, you know, we have an awesome asset in, in the University of South Alabama. We have Spring Hill College, we have University of Mobile. But a lot of times going off to college, they never return. Uh, me and my wife, we, we settled here. We have our three boys here. Um, we found careers here. Uh, and so I would, uh, you know, I think Mobile needs to do a better job of trying to retain what we have, um, and also drawing new people back in.
And I think it's interesting, uh, and I've heard that before. I heard that specifically when I got connected with the Chamber of Commerce. And they've got an entire, um, section dedicated to that. And it's, you know, hey, we're going to train up these great folks. We're going to educate them, whether it's public school, private school, and then they may go off to college. Um, you know, I've got a, a daughter at Auburn, um, but then after that, what's going to happen? And, and I think a lot of times, uh, some folks, they feel like, oh, well, I grew up here, you know, I don't want to stay here or whatever. But there are a lot of big steps being made. And one of those is that young people who come out of college, they want to have a thriving downtown area. You know, that's kind of the hip school place to be. So of course Sandy, I believe the mayor is, is working on that. And there's a lot of excitement going on there. But also, um, with just like, why would you want to stay here? Why would you want to do that? And so, uh, we've got a lot of folks that are cognizant of that and they keep that at the forefront. It's a focus. And so with that, and I know this is kind of tied in directly, but South Alabama, I mean, you remember, you know, growing up here, it was like, it was just this little place, but I mean, it's a real deal. And my daughter, my other daughter actually wants to go there.
Yeah. It's a, I mean, for years it was the commuter school.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, and just what's happened, I guess over probably the last two decades there is amazing. And, um, especially with the health side of the house. People are receiving at the, the top tier education in the medical field. Um, they're practicing at the University of South Alabama Hospital or University Hospital. Um, there's, uh, the freestanding clinic that are freestanding emergency room that's happening, um, in, in West Mobile, um, actually in District Six. Uh, not across the street, but that side is on District Six. Uh, and you know, now with Providence Hospital converting to a USA system hospital. Um, South is, South is booming right now and they're thriving. And, um, it's awesome to see, uh, the, just the, I mean, when you step on campus for a game, whether it's basketball or, or football or baseball, you go like, you can kind of feel it now. You can feel, you can feel like the, I guess, like a little bit of like electricity there. It's awesome to see.
Now you mentioned, can, I don't want you to let the cat out of the bag or tell us anything we shouldn't know, but a freestanding emergency room?
All right. Yeah. They had the, um, so they have the freestanding emergency room. So right there across from Heroes.
I was about to say.
That's where it is. We passed here the other day and I was like, what, what's going on there?
Yeah. Uh, so that whole area there. So, uh, started with the emergency room. Um, and then they're building a doctor's complex or a medical complex back in the back. And, uh, I know they have more plans, um, in the future for that. But really they're, uh, that, that awesome, that's a freestanding, uh, emergency room. Um, if you need to be transported, South has their own ambulances. Um, they'll transport you to university hot, university hospital. Um, but unfortunately we've, fortunately and unfortunately, we've, uh, had to use that in our family.
Oh no.
But, um, it, uh, everything's fine. Uh, but, uh, but, um, it's a, it's an awesome asset to have. And that's a, that's kind of like thinking outside the box. So instead of clogging up the hospital emergency room, um, you know, let's start putting smaller freestanding things out in the community.
When did it open? I didn't even know it was open.
It's been, it's been open about, I think, I believe it about a year and a half ago. Um, and. I know at the grounds, uh, we had a, we had a, a lady, uh, that didn't feel so well at an event. Um, and she asked, you know, where's the, where's an emergency room? We need to go have her taken care of. And we sent her up to that. And, um, within two hours, uh, she was back, which is unheard of for an emergency room. So they, um, it's, it's very efficient, but, um, that, that's cool to see those things happening. And, and it's just really making our city better.
That's great to know. So, you know, another thing that, that people, you know, in terms of people moving on and not staying here is that, I know what's going to start happening and I, I've heard stories about this, is that these college kids, they're graduating and they're wanting to move to other places. And then they're looking at housing. They're going, hmm, Mobile, Alabama's got something going on because the cost of living here is substantially lower than some of these other places. Uh, and the cost of housing, of course, is lower as well. And I've shared on other episodes that there's so much money being poured into West Mobile, uh, these new developments. And so it's just going to keep happening. So.
I think so. And then, uh, you really focusing and you kind of keyed in on that earlier or a bit ago, uh, focusing on that quality of life issue, uh, with the city doing kind of that land swap for the Brookley waterfront access. Um, I think that's things that, that when people are looking for a house, they're looking for affordability, obviously, but also the quality of life, uh, the downtown scene, the, the things that have happened, the shopping, uh, whether the Publix is close enough.
Yeah, that's right.
That's important.
And then, uh, and then also the, the, I guess the assets that the city has, like Metal Honor Park and then the new park out there on the bay. Um, all of that, I think, um, just going to make us even more appealing in the next decade or the course of the next decade.
I agree. I agree. So yesterday I was driving, I, I, I mean, I was all over the place. I was in Chunchula, then I was in Sims, then I was in, uh, where was I? I was down, uh, I was, I was downtown also, but I was driving all around. And so I was, I was on Ziggler Boulevard. And I mean, they've done a massive, uh, expansion. They're going to four lane everything, which is going to be great. But, you know, talking about the infrastructure and so forth, that's going to have a huge impact there. Uh, but that also kind of points me over to another question. And we've talked about this on other episodes is Hillcrest Road is this massive, uh, you know, traffic congestion center at Hillcrest and Greelot. And, you know, we're scratching our head on what's going to happen there. And so, and you're on the hot seat today. Like, like what's the magic button? You know, what's the magic pill?
So if I had a magic wand, I believe me, I would have used it, uh, a long time ago. But, um, when I, I see that, uh, traffic is an issue. Um, think, some things that need to occur, the Nevis Road, um, extension needs to, needs to be finished. Um, so that'll connect Hillcrest over to, to Solly. Um, that'll help.
Oh, whoa. Hang on, let's sit on that one for a minute. Hillcrest, so it's going to go through.
To keep Nevis going.
Yeah. So there is a, so there was a plan, um.
That will be a game changer.
Maybe a decade, maybe a decade ago. Um, and I, you know, the land, it, land was never acquired, but it's still there. Um, uh, but it was, it was blocked by the city council. Uh, so really honestly, that, that needs to come back and that needs to happen. Um, cause that'll immediately alleviate some of that traffic congestion at the front. Um, I know right now the money's been set aside. So things should start being implemented on the Greelot roads, which sink in Greelot. Um, I know right now the money's been set aside, so things should start being implemented on the Greelot roads, so sinking Greelot Road. Um, Hillcrest, uh, definitely needs to, Hillcrest and Cottage Hill, definitely that, that whole area, that, that whole, you know, cluster of roads and, and, and lights on that, that needs to be the next priority on, on getting them synced. And, uh, really right now, what's happening, uh, with the budget, um, and what the money that's being set aside is it's basically, it's basically repairing things right now. Um, uh, repairing existing, so repairing existing loop system. So you pull up and you know, your car triggers the, the light cycle. Um, what needs to, what, what needs, what it needs to happen is, is everything needs to be converted over to like a more cellular technology with those sensors. Like if you pull off the interstate, AlDOT's done a great job. If you pull off the interstate, um, pretty much the majority of, of every light on the interstate has the, the sensor, um, thing that, that, uh, picks the car up and, and triggers a different, uh, light cycle. So everything needs to be converted to that for, you know, that immediately to kind of help. But as of right now, the city's really fixing the things that are broke, um, with the intention, because really, I mean, it's a, we're looking at a, a $20 million problem. Um, but right now the, the things that, that are broke need to be fixed. So that's what's occurring right now. So really thinking outside of the box, um, you know, Hillcrest Road for years has been discussed, uh, uh, no turn lefts, uh, only turn rights. Uh, I think it's just time to get the community back together, the neighbors back together and say, okay, we have a problem. Uh, what's your suggestions? Uh, what's the traffic engineer suggestions? Um, and, and how do we, how do we bite? How do we, how do we eat this elephant? Um, you know, you gotta eat it one bite at a time. So how can we?
I think it's expanding Nevis, Nevis.
That's going to be a big deal.
That would, um, so it was, it was kind of batted down just because, uh, obviously the city has, has specs. So curb gutter, stormwater, um, and then like, you know, the next step is like a sidewalk, um, at least on one side or two, two sides. So, uh, the Nevis Road right now is on county spec. Um, and it was proposed to continue Nevis Road on the new extension at county spec. And that's where, um, that's where kind of the disagreement came in and it kind of, it kind of died. You know, uh, my suggestion would probably be, uh, build it half county spec, build it half city spec. Cause you know, eventually we're going to possibly have to expand that. So I think that, um, that's one, one way we, we fix traffic. But also too, I'm a Strong Towns, uh, a Strong Towns person. I love what Strong Towns does. Um, you know, we need to do a better job of also ensuring that there's, uh, I guess a diversity of stores and, and things, um, around the, the population center. Cause, uh, you know, I can just run to Publix, but, um, whenever you get kind of like on, on Cody or Solly Road, if you're in Winfield, you know, that's a little bit more than just running to Publix. You, you gotta, so really kind of doing things and, and, uh, properly developing our area moving forward, I, I think will keep with, that will help with traffic.
That's exciting for sure, you know? Lots of things that are kind of out there and the plane is, is flying around and it's going to land, you know, it is.
I need that to land though.
Yeah, that's going to be a game changer.
Hopefully it won't land on Hillcrest.
For sure. Well, taking all that into account, uh, what would you say is like a hidden gem in Mobile? You know, there's some little things that maybe other folks don't know about.
Um, I guess kind of being, uh, uh, so, so you, you kind of, you, you change your mindset when you have children. Um, and I guess for, you know, at least the next eighteen years of our life, it's, it's all centered around our kids. Um, so I would say as a parent, um, and really, you know, growing up, we, we, we kind of took advantage of it. But, um, Medal of Honor Park really is the gem to me. Um, it's something that, uh, it's a place you can go. Um, all the time people are hosting birthday parties. They had so, they had so many birthday parties on Saturday. They had to build more of the little, the little, um, the little, uh,
Pavilion type.
Uh, and there's a, I mean, at Medal, there's a, there's everything from frisbee golf to tennis, uh, baseball fields. Uh, and then probably like the best, uh, the best playground in all of Mobile, I'd say. And then there's a splash pad, uh, when it works, it's great.
And the dog park too.
And the dog park. Yeah. So I would say, and I mean hiking or, uh, or, uh, running trails, walking trails. Um, I would say that's probably the, to me, the, the gym, uh, the hidden gym, uh, that's kind of just right under our nose that we, we kind of, don't really give it full credit for.
I like that they have walking trails that are shaded and in the sun. So it's nice to.
And I made a video about two and a half years ago on some of those dirt trails.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm just walking on the normal concrete, you know, sidewalk. And I'm like, wait, what's going on here?
I like the dirt trails. I want to see the trees.
This is crazy.
If you don't know about it, you're like, can I go back here? Um, but it, uh, they, uh, Port City Pacers puts on a race there every year. Um, so they, you know, it's kind of, uh, it's, it's, uh, I think it's called, uh, Do It In The Bush. So you run off in the, you run off into the, the bush part and then you come back out into the road course. So it's a, it's a, they just had it too, because we, we handed waters out, but, um, it was well attended, good turnout. But, um, that's one of their, their off, off-road courses that they run.
This trail.
See my husband, he plays disc golf there every Saturday and, um, he was trying to be nice and go get somebody's disc that went off. And he was running down the trail, tripped on a tree branch and broke his leg.
Oh, man.
He will not be doing that again.
Not good. And that backs up to, to Hickory Ridge, right?
It does.
Okay. So that's, that's where I've heard people talk about the trails that come in. Okay. Gotcha. So another question is, this is kind of two parts. I ask you what your favorite restaurant is in Mobile. But also then after that, your favorite one in District Six, if they're different.
Yeah. So.
We'll give you two options.
I would probably say, so, uh, I have two top favorite restaurants, um, Binge's, um, so the, the Thai restaurant.
Right across from our office, right?
Yep, on Hillcrest.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then, um, my number two, and you could ask the, ask the folks I work with, um, my easy go-to is just Heroes, it's WeMo Heroes. Um, even though it's not in district, but with the redistricting lines that are, that are existing now, um, as of next campaign cycle, it will be in District Six. But, um, that's a, I like, I mean, I, I like that. It's just like, it's convenient for me from work. Um, you know, everybody knows where it's at. So I eat a lot of Heroes.
Interesting. And so I've never been to the other place, um, Binge's. I've never been there. Uh, Thai food. I know that John over here is our resident, uh, Thai, Thai lover. He loves him some Thai food.
Thai is definitely the best. And there's three on Hillcrest.
Really?
Wow.
Interesting.
Do you have a favorite of the three?
Uh, Thai diner up there by Shoe Station.
Yep, that's good.
The reason why is I was coming from, uh, Cottage Hill and past Greelot. And there was the first one and it was drive-through only at the time. So I didn't want that. And then I went to the next one and it was closed. So I went on down toward airport and I pulled in at the Thai diner and it was absolutely incredible.
It's awesome.
Um, and then also, uh, uh, honorable mention is, uh, I'd say Asia Garden. That's, uh, I mean, it's.
Oh, that's the one that used to be the gas station?
Um, it's the one next to, uh, next to Mark's, um, Auto Place, uh, right there at corner of Cottage Hill and Hillcrest.
Yes, that used to be a gas station.
That, okay, that to me is the funniest thing ever. That was a full-blown Circle K for years. This is a long time ago. And it's so wild. It's like, they didn't invest a lot in decorations. They didn't invest a lot in.
They've had those string lights at night.
But they didn't kind of turn it into this really big, you know, kind of a traditional restaurant. But what is consistent is it's always packed.
Always. Yeah. I think they take Mondays off, but it is, uh, it's always busy.
That is incredible.
Lunch crowd and the dinner crowd. And then, uh, Saturday, a lot of times on lazy Saturdays, we, we, we do takeout there. Um, so I stop by and you always know somebody there. It's kind of like Cheers. You, you always know somebody there.
That's great. I've never been, but that's because I'm so picky and that's my own problem and that's for a whole nother episode. Uh, so, so what about, you know, the city of Mobile in general, five years from now? We've got a lot of things going on, a lot of things, like I mentioned, these little airplanes that are floating around, all these great possibilities that are about to land. But where do you see us in five years in general?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, you know, if you had a crystal ball, um, it would definitely be really easy to, to answer that specifically. But, you know, kind of high-mindedly, um, I see Mobile continue to grow. Uh, I see our population, uh, not just because of annexation, but I see our population continue to grow. There's, there's programs like in the works now of, of taking areas that, that traditionally, um, would be overlooked for, for housing and revitalizing those areas. So I see those, those houses coming back on the market or, um, you know, people refurbishing houses, especially in midtown. Um, seeing those, those areas pick back up with population. Um, so I see us growing population wise. Um, I see the brain drain starting to stop. Um, with, with South, uh, and, and Mobile and Spring Hill, I, I, I think there's plenty of opportunities for people to get an education here. Um, a, a top-tier education. And I think with Airbus and, and some of these ancillary things coming online, uh, you know, Airbus is, is about to, is entering into a partnership, um, with another, um, aircraft company to build the tanker now. Um, so, um, I, I don't know exactly where, um, where it is in the process, but, um, the bid's back out there. So that would, that would immediately open up another line, um, out there. And, and with that, I think you start seeing, you see, you continue to see the blue collar jobs come in. But then you also start seeing those, those ancillary white collar jobs. So really, uh, I think people are going to be able to find a job in Mobile, get an education and find a job and, um, set up shop with their family. So I, I see that starting to happen in the next five years.
That's exciting. Yeah. Lots of stuff going on.
I see our boundaries growing. Um, I really think annexation's the hot topic. It's the week before our election.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so I, I see, I see that, um, I see that being a positive thing and I see people wanting to come into the city of Mobile.
And, and so obviously if we get over the 200,000 mark, you know, in terms of the size of the population. And you, you know, we've missed out on some funding in the past because of that being under. But if we get over that, what are some other things that would happen as a result of that?
Yeah. So we, um, we obviously would get to keep our two A tags. So, uh, you know, we'd be the second largest. Um, but I really think once you get over that, you start, it, it all goes back to that momentum. Uh, once you have people that are living here, once you have a population above that, um, you start turning heads. I think, uh, companies that traditionally would overlook, you know, a, a less than 200,000, um, population, uh, kind of say, well, you know, Airbus has moved in and Ostal's thriving, uh, maybe it's time for me to look at this as well. So I really think that growth in population just shows that Mobile's a place where people want to be. Um, and that starts turning heads, um, specifically with industries.
Yeah. So it's just that momentum.
It is.
You know, it's, starts to show up more on the map and a lot of the folks that I talk with, and you know, I get the phone call. They're like, hey, you know, been watching your videos and, uh, a lot of times, uh, people are just fishing. They're, they're in these crazy expensive places and they're paying, um, literally eight to $10,000 a year in property tax. On $300,000 houses. I mean, it, it's, it's really hard to believe. And they're just surfing. They're fishing for something, you know, they're surfing the web and low cost of living. They type it in, of course, Mobile pops up, the Gulf Coast, and then they start to dive in deeper, start to look more. And, and so having that happen, get over the 200,000 point, all the industry that's coming in. Another phone call I get or another question I get is what about, hey, do you think I can find a job there? And I always tell people, I'm like, yeah, I really do. I believe so.
Uh, there's, there's hiring fairs all over. I know Ostal is doing, uh, they're going and doing, um, several fairs in different communities around us. Just because they're, I mean, every, everybody has a job. Uh, um, so it's basically you gotta steal somebody else's employee. So that's a, that's a positive thing that just, I mean, it all goes back to momentum.
And so when you talk about that, and I know you're just kind of, kind of saying that, you know, steal somebody's employee. But, but what that does is that's a mindset. And what I mean is there's a, there's, uh, an urgency, there's high demand. And so what that does is that of course drives pay up. And when you drive pay up, then it makes it more attractive. Because sometimes people say, well, yeah, you know, they might have a lot of jobs, but maybe they don't pay well. And so what you're talking about, that type of mindset, it's going to drive the average pay up and, uh, which is always a good thing.
It is. And it, it kind of goes, it's just not on a, it's just not on a huge industry level either. There's several mom and pop shops that are, that have opened up over the past couple of years that are thriving. Um, I, you know, we'll shout out to Yellow Hammer, um, just their expansion and their culture. And I'm always joking, telling Jeff and Mo that I'm going to steal some of their employees next time I have openings, just because they've done a great job with their culture. And there's several like small mom and pops around the community. Um, you know, Fu Sakli's is a mom and pop and it's a fast food restaurant, but they have wonderful culture. Um, so it's, it's just not just on a high level, not the large industry, but it's the mom and pop shops that have been able to thrive in Mobile just because of the people here.
Same with Moby.
That's it.
They've got some great, great folks too.
Yeah. Lots of great things going on, lots of great stories to tell. Uh, and again, I mean, if you were to kind of put all this in a nutshell, and somebody were watching this video, who's in, you know, the state of Washington and they're considering coming here. What's something you would share, uh, just like a, a big picture kind of thing about why they should move here? What would be a positive impact on their life, on their family as far as digging deep and, uh, starting over? What, what, you know, what's something you could share?
So I would say, I mean, I, I'll do a, for instance, for us, uh, we've, we've found a career. Um, there's a career, there, there are careers here for you. Uh, there's also wonderful people, wonderful enablers. Um, we've, uh, we had, we shot fireworks off in our cul-de-sac the other night. Um, and all the neighbors came out and we all had a great time. So there's wonderful neighbors here. Uh, there's also opportunity for your kids. Uh, we, we have great schools here. Um, we have a good school system that's, that's, you know, a lot of folks have kind of looked, looked at, looked down on a little bit, but they're improving. They're doing things now. They're doing things to, to bring the standard up and, um, in the, in the public school system. Uh, there's also great teachers, uh, for your kids. Um,
I'm married to one.
We have some of the most wonderful, wonderful teachers here. Uh, my, my kids go to a magnet school. We have a great magnet school program in Mobile. Um, I would say that it's a great place to, to come and get started and to start over. Um, housing's affordable. Y'all, y'all can attest to that. Uh, there's, the wage here is good. Um, and it's a, it's a great place to live. Cost of living is, is low compared to a ton of other cities. And then at the end of the day, uh, you know, even though you have to endure about two months of heat, um, you know, it gives you a good opportunity to lose some weight every summer. That's sweating it out.
That's it.
That's the problem is that gaining the weight is from all the good seafood, all the fried seafood.
It balances itself out.
If you think you've had seafood and you live somewhere else, you've never really had seafood, unless it's from the Gulf.
That is correct. That is correct. Well, Josh, I mean, we've been, been, you know, honored to have you here. But before we let you go, you know, we always like to hit everybody with the lightning round. This is our opinionated time and, uh, hopefully we won't cause any enemies, you know, Josh is just going to share his thoughts. But that's it. That's it. Just opinions. But Avery's going to ask you some questions and, uh, we'd love to hear your thoughts. And if you have to plead the fifth, we'll give you one.
Okay.
All right. So is it Fu Sakli's or Zack's Peace?
I'm a, we're a Fu family.
Dreamland or Meat Boss?
We're a Meat Boss family.
Old Dutch or Marble Slab?
Old Dutch.
Cravers or the original Oyster House?
That's a good one. Uh, I'd say, I'd say Original Oyster House.
Got it. You going to take the Bayway or the Causeway?
Oh, you have to take the Causeway.
Airport or Cottage Hill?
Cottage Hill.
Midtown?
Airport's still worse.
Uh, Midtown or West Mobile?
Oh, West Mobile all day long.
Yellow Hammer or Starbucks?
Yellow Hammer.
Bricketts or Longhorn?
Bricketts.
You're going to Dolphin Island or Gulf Shores?
Oh, you gotta go to Dolphin Island.
Absolutely. Alabama or Auburn?
Uh, I'm Alabama fan. But obviously a, a South grad, so I'll throw that one out. But, um, we grew up in Alabama fan. You, I'm, I'm pretty sure that was what my label said whenever I was born. Let's check the label on his neck. Okay, Alabama.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Well, Josh, thank you so much, you know, for joining us. Uh, we certainly have enjoyed getting to know you, hearing some stories and man, the porcupine story.
I know it.
I'll never forget that. I'll never forget that. But I do want to remind everybody, don't forget, if you're watching this on YouTube, uh, which is the Living in Mobile, Alabama YouTube channel, like and subscribe, uh, because we're always dropping new content. And if you're listening to this on audio, whether it's iTunes or Spotify, you know, leave us a review, leave us a comment, download. We love hearing from you all, but what we really like is when you ask a question, uh, for the guest. And so we're able to connect, get a response and have them chime in. And if you have a suggestion for a guest next time, leave that in the comments as well. Because we'd love to, uh, to hear their story. And we've got some exciting folks coming up. Uh, this next season of the podcast is going to be amazing. So, uh, hey, thank you again for everything and it's been our pleasure and we cannot wait for the next podcast, where we're going to hear some amazing stories about living right here in the city of Mobile.